This meeting is being recorded.
It is now.
Jackie or Colleen, are you?
What? What'd you say?
They got it. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Counselor Spleeloff.
Should we take roll call again?
No, I think it's okay. Everyone's present. Counselor Whitney has an excused absence.
Thank you.
All right. Any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? And I do have a couple. So first off, I see Linda Karamara in the audience, and I'm going to ask her. Counselor Whitney let me know that she will not be here in attendance tonight to talk about the Banner Park updates, and she said that she had previously told you that she would be, so it's up to you if you want to go ahead and kind of give us an update what's going on. That would be welcome, and if you would like to table it for the next meeting, that's acceptable as well.
I think I'm prepared to go forward, and Charlie Nichols, also on the Parks and Community Services Committee, is on the call this evening, so why don't we go ahead?
Okay, thank you, Linda. And she apologized. She had a family thing come up last minute, so.
Sure.
Um, let's see. So I would like to move appointments fifteen point one, point two, and point three. I would like to move that up to business from the city council. And in future meetings, I think I'm going to move appointments up on the agenda as well. That way, if we have people waiting for a seat, we can better let them know what time to be here and be present instead of at the very end of our meetings. So I'm going to put that at nine point two, three, and four, starting with counselor appointment. Does anyone else have any other adjustments?
Um, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if it would be a agenda item or not. I would like to talk about the budget training and Kevin Cronin actually told me that we could do that under council comments, and I, and I will, but I also wanted to know if we could get an update on the public safety fee software issue.
Okay, so let's put, yeah, let's go ahead and put the that was a budget committee training.
Yes.
I'll put that under nine point five. And then, um, since we don't have anything from the finance director tonight. Um, Colleen, are you there?
I don't see her name on the Zoom. Is she at City Hall with?
I am. I'm here.
There she is.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Colleen, would you be able to give a short update a little bit about that, maybe under nine point six?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm just gonna call that PSF financial.
Update.
Okay. Does anyone else have any additions, corrections, or adjustments? All right, moving on to public comment. I'll go ahead and start with Jackie and Colleen if they have anybody there at City Hall for public comment.
There's nobody here. It's just us.
Okay, nobody there. All right, next we'll go to the Zoom, and if there is anyone in the Zoom video that has a public comment, go ahead and either turn your mute off or raise your hand if you know how to do that feature. First one I see is Trudy Hammond. Go ahead and state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Thank you, Trudy.
I, Trudy Hammond, seven, six, three, four, nine. Well, I'm away, and I was wondering if the city has a city surveyor that the public could access. That's pretty much my only question. And I did submit an application for the seat, but I withdrew it due to some circumstances I have to handle. And I appreciate everybody's support. I think that's it.
Thank you, Trudy. Would you be available to, able to send an email to the city administrator on your city surveyor question?
I, I can.
Okay, perhaps when Kevin arrives, we might be able to ask him that as well at the end of the meeting in the second public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I don't know.
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
We do not have one.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else in public comment? All right, well, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm gonna go ahead and read what I have that was submitted to me. And I believe all counselors received a copy addressed to each counselor for a petition to reverse the public safety fee. I have reviewed it. Have all the counselors received a copy?
Yes, I have.
Yes, I have as well.
I have.
Jackie, the copies are on paper, so I will drop off a paper copy to you so that you can have it for the record. And I'm just gonna go ahead and read the first page of the petition. Mayor and council during the September sixteenth twenty twenty-one regular session, ordinance nine thirty-seven was adopted by a four-two margin and imposed a twenty-two dollar a month assessment for owner-occupied properties payable directly to the city of Oak Ridge. Ordinance nine three-seven is a little more than a hastily crafted, ill-conceived solution to resolve roughly five hundred thousand of budgetary shortfall created by multiple years of deficit spending. As written, the ordinance would allow exemptions for financially challenged residents, and those exemptions would be moot in many cases as the city of Oak Ridge is generally not a party to as landlord-tenants agreements. Those in outlying areas such as West Fur that also rely on public safety services from the city of Oak Ridge would be subjected to an increased cost for the inner-city agreements that contract those services. The attachment, the attached signature were obtained from citizens that include Oak Ridge residents, property owners, and renters alike at various socio-economic levels and neighbors living in outlying areas that are also affected, though less directly. While undeniable that public safety is paramount for both citizens and their duly-elected representatives that have a duty to provide those services, we, the undersigned, believe that the most efficient application of the resources necessary through responsible stewardship of public funds compared to sole reliance on increased collections from citizens. That approach merely transforms what should be an official responsibility into a consequence to private citizens. And detached, it looks like we have probably one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one pages of signatures. Um, so what I want to say to the citizens is that all of the counselors have received a copy. We're gonna take some time and read this over, and I can promise you, there is gonna be a lot of discussion about this coming up here shortly, especially in the budget season, but hopefully before then. So right now, I'm gonna allow the counselors to read it over, and then I'll ask them to get back to me what they would like to do for the next council meeting as far as putting it as an agenda item for the next council meeting. And also, I just want to say I really appreciate people going through and doing something professionally like this and presenting it peacefully to council. Is there anyone else that has public comment? Jerry Reed, go ahead.
I have a question because of what you just stated. Um, so if you're going to discuss it and possibly bring it up at the following meeting, if you did choose to vote to remove the fee, would it be retroactive at all? So like, you got the information, the petition this month, but you have to put it off for a whole other month before you can do anything with it because bureaucracy works that way. So that means another month of being billed.
Yeah. Um, I absolutely hear and understand what you're saying, Jerry. Unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for that right now. I don't know how it would be retroactive if it could be or if it could not be, and any other counselors feel free to speak up and answer, Jerry, however you feel you would like to respond.
Mayor, can I address that question really quickly?
Absolutely.
And, and I just want to quickly introduce myself. I'm Kevin Cronin. I'm the interim city administrator, and I appreciate the mayor letting me just say a few words. So I do appreciate the petition. I have not seen it yet, so I will look at that when I'm back in the office. But the wheels of bureaucracy turn, turn very slowly, and so my job is to provide all the information to the council so they can make informed choices. A retroactive is not something that we can consider right away. This will be wrapped up into a larger budget picture, and so we are going to be rolling up our sleeves over the next couple of months to prepare a proposed budget. As part of that proposed budget, we have to look at emergency services. And so even before I get to emergency services, I gotta understand what my healthcare costs are gonna be, what the purse costs are gonna be, where are my anticipated revenues, do I have a revenue forecast for on property? I have so many other balls in the air that I have in order to produce a proposed budget. I can't even get to the versions to services and look at the, the existing fee versus other fees. So there's quite a bit of work to do before we can get there, so it's gonna take a, a few months before we can answer a question. The petition is helpful to understand where the the, some of the public is on this question, and that's helpful for the council to make policy choices. But from an administration standpoint, we need to have full picture. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yes, what, before Brian left our last C A, I asked him that very question. Is anything retroactive? And he says, no. Unless, he says, they will not pay any retroactive back, no reimbursement back to the public. So that's, that's what, what he told me, so I'm just going on what, what that is. So if you paid it, that is, belongs to the city. And if you haven't paid it, then it gets reversed. Then I guess you don't get billed. I don't know how that works. Uh, maybe our administrator can answer that part. I'm not sure.
Well, I, I would like to give him a little bit of time to respond and maybe come back with some of those answers at the last meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead, couns, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I think that most of everything I was gonna say was just said by our interim city administrator and counselor Spleedoff. However, I would like to just add that I think that whether it's before or during budget cycle, when we make this decision, ultimately, it's the city council's decision on how everything's gonna be handled. But thank you. I also want to extend my appreciation to all the citizens that were involved in participating in their, their right to address their counsel with their concerns. I appreciate that.
Uh, go ahead, Lisa Sprague.
Hi, it's me and my husband Josh, but he's the one that has a question.
Can you state your name and address?
Josh Sprague, four, seven, six, three, six, Klein Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
So it sounds like we're gonna be paying this fee for a few more months regardless. So when can we expect a breakdown of where this money is going? Percentages are going to what department and where?
Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
You're muted.
You're muted, Dawn.
I think we're actually going to be having a little update on that when Colleen talks to the council a little bit in this meeting.
Okay. So everybody, are you gonna send something out to every citizen? Because I don't, I mean, you can say that it's a public safety fee. You see what I'm saying? I, that's a pretty broad spectrum. I mean, I'd like to know, you know, this is going here for this, you know, to buy new equipment for the fire department, or this is going to the police department to buy new equipment. You understand what I'm saying? And how much is being spent on?
I do understand what you're saying, and technically, it's not broken down like that. When the fee was created, it was based on the assumption that our fire department was not bringing in the amount of revenue that they needed for the budget that they had. Um, but then through the budget process, we actually learned that it was more the general fund, which supports our police department is where the shortages are, so the money is allocated, though, to be shared between those two departments, police and fire.
Okay, well, can we?
Help them with their budget. What's that?
I, I understand that. I'm saying, can we get proof of that? I'd like, I mean, I can right now call the IRS and make an, and any department in the government, and they will break down where the money is being spent, any kind of tax dollars that you pay, and how much is going to them. I think that we should expect the same thing for the city of Oak Ridge.
You can absolutely see that on a monthly basis. If you go to the city website and look under their calendar for council meetings, at the second meeting of every month, we get a financial update with all of our spending for the month prior. And it's in what they call a council packet. You're welcome to open that and review our financials. Every single month, you'll see every single dollar that was spent. It's about probably a thirty-page document. Maybe more.
I will look at it. Thank you.
And if you need help finding it, please reach out to me. My contact information is on the city website as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for answering that, Dawn. All right, is there anyone else for public comment? All right, not seeing any. I'm gonna move on to number six, mayor comments. I have a few things to bring up. And just, I, I, in case I forgot, I just wanted to mention, I'm looking at this petition in front of me, just so that it noted on the record, there was four hundred and thirty-three signatures on it. And I will get a copy of that to the city recorder. Okay, so a couple of things. I have been attending quite a few meetings, kind of getting my feet wet and learning about some of the outside projects going on. Getting involved in El Rapa, and I hope to have El Rapa here in the next month or two to really give a full presentation to council on the almost five million dollar grant that they are that they are using for Oak Ridge projects. I attended an Oak Ridge Air Meeting and just kind of learning about their group as well. They're gonna be kind of getting involved in some of the community activities to really get their name out there and their purpose and projects that they're working on, as well as getting involved with the school. The Spotlight Theater definitely wanted to thank them for having an open house last week and inviting public and comment to showcase the work that they have put into that building. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, I actually wanted to add that on the agenda, put that on nine point seven to ask counselors if they would be interested in being on a committee to work on the future WAC projects. Um, just as a reminder, Tree Planting Festival is coming up May seventh. I hope that the city council is involved and helps out where they do need help. They have a new coordinating committee there, and I think the event's gonna go off pretty well this year. So anybody that wants to help with that, please get in contact with them. Um, I'm working on seeing what training, extra training is available for counselors. When I started on city council, there was so many trainings, conferences, and I really kind of dove into that, and I know some of you came on during COVID. And a lot of those same opportunities haven't been able, but since we're kind of switching gears, I'm really hoping that those opportunities come back up and come out an email probably from the League of Oregon. So if you do see those come up, make sure to bring those up to Kevin. Um, let him know. And I believe we have a little bit of training money in the budget, but some of those classes are just awesome training. Uh, next week, I'll be attending the mayor's roundtable at Crestwell. And that is all I have right now for mayors. Does anyone else have any other announcements? All right.
I would like to have one.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Counselor Bjarnson has her hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment real quick and, and throw my hat into the group of us that are really appreciative of the citizens coming forward with the petition. I always love to see that, and I was on that side of the fence not that long ago. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's very important in our processes that we hear from citizens, whether whether or not we all agree on the same things or any of that. We need to hear from you guys, so I do appreciate all the work you put into it. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you as well.
I fully agree too. Go ahead, Audie, Counselor Spleeloff.
Me, me too. I'm very appreciative seeing our citizens starting to get involved in our city. And it's really appreciative that they take their own initiative and get involved in here, so thank you very much for all of that. I sure appreciate it. Another thing, have we do we, have we learned any more about the special district? Of fire?
We have not been able to meet with Hazel Dell. I hope that happens this month.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So next thing, let's go on to consent agenda. If I could get a motion for that. Does anyone have a motion for the, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
So sorry, my unmute. Um, I would actually like to remove one item from the consent agenda, and that is the minutes from January sixth of twenty twenty-two. There was an update that I emailed out today to the city administrator and yourself, Mayor, and I know that it was late in the afternoon, so I didn't see a response back, and I just want to move that out until we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you. I haven't got a chance to see that as well. Okay, can we make note that we're removing the minutes for January sixth, twenty twenty-two? And can I get a motion for the remaining minutes there in the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Can call for the vote, Jackie?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
I.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine point one, city auditor brief. And, um, yeah, before we go too far into that, our city administrator, Kevin Cronin, kind of snuck in, and I just wanted to take a minute to introduce him. Um, you see there, he's listed under city recorder, but this is Kevin Cronin, and he is our pro tem. So he'll be with us for a few months, and I, I hope all of us have got a chance to go in there and sit down with him and talk. I know I have. I'm excited about his enthusiasm and his desire to kind of dig in and help us here in Oak Ridge. So, um, yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I was gonna wait till the city administrator report, but thanks for giving me a little bit of time. Uh, so yes, I've gotten a chance to meet all the counselors, finished up with Melissa this afternoon, and just had some great conversations with each of the council. I'm super excited to work with you guys. I'm super excited to work with the community and Oak Ridge, and I'm just happy to be on board, so I'll keep it really brief until you get to my agenda.
All right, so I'm assuming Brad, are you here for the auditor briefing?
Yes, I am. Yes, hello, everyone.
Well, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Great. Let me just share my screen here. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present the city's findings tonight. My name is Brad Toronto, and I'm the senior associate in charge of the audit for the city of Oak Ridge. Really sends his regards, and I'm sorry he's not able to join us tonight. We all have busy and full agendas, so I don't plan on taking too much of your time. Essentially, there were two audits that we conducted and reported on, first being the generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP audit, and the second being the Oregon Municipal Audit Law related administrative rules or O M S audit. So I'm gonna dive into the best practices. These are merely suggestions on behalf of the firm. They're not negative remarks or anything we found necessarily wrong, but items for management and the council to be aware and consider from year to year. It is impossible to have that thing perfect, and we're aware of that. Management does a very good job of creating compensating controls to mitigate risk, but we still want to make sure everyone is aware of these items. First best practice finding we have is in relation to journal entries. We noted manual journal entries were completed, but there was no evidence of approval except in five instances. We do recommend that all journal entries be approved by someone other than the preparer and show evidence of approval. Additionally, while reviewing the journal entry process, it was noted that there was no reviewer for manual journal entries. We recommend that all manual journal entries be reviewed by a supervisor or superior of the person responsible for creating the initial journal entries. The second one is our fidelity insurance crime coverage finding. Essentially, the fidelity insurance coverage amount of five hundred thousand of cash balances exceeded that amount. So while this might be an appropriate level of coverage, we recommend that each year, the elected officials determine if this is an acceptable level of risk based on the potential liability. This finding is very common among my clients. Insurance is just very expensive, not a big deal on that one. Next, we have the governing body and. Next, we have the governing body and government override of controls. Integral part of internal controls is the monitoring of financial activities. By those charged with governments, you guys, the council. This can be accomplished by one, asking specifically the design questions to senior staff. Two, by reviewing financial statements and projections. And three, by comparing financial results to pre-established benchmarks. While elected officials participate in the budget adoption process and receive staff-prepared financial statements. These only partially fulfill the monitoring function. We do recommend that the city articulate their monitoring practices and record them in the minutes when these events occur. Moving on, we noted that the city has more than the legally required number of funds. In a nutshell. We recommend that the city consider closing funds that are not in use, required to be separated. But the GFOA and the GASB. Governmental Accounting Standards Board encourage governments to use the minimum number of funds, just for simplicity's sake. Next, we have. The. Intellectual property coverage finding. And the documents provided to us, we saw no indication of city policy regarding the ownership of intellectual property. Developed by staff either using city assets or during employment hours at the city. We recommend that the creation of a city policy, if one is not already in place. To address the potential, the potential creation of patents, copyrights, and other claims on intellectual property. Using city assets or time. Next, we have a finding in relation to accounts payable. We noted that there were a few checks in the accounts payable aging register as of June thirty, twenty twenty-one. That had been paid during the year. After further review, we saw that there was errors entering duplicate invoices into the accounting system. Not a huge deal, but it is something to be aware of. Finally. During our testing of cash, we noted eighty-four stale data checks dated between twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen. In the general checking account. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. While this amount is immaterial, we do recommend that all stale data checks be investigated. And if necessary, turned over to Oregon's Department of Unclaimed Property. That is everything I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Councillor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually wondered if you could explain a little bit more about that last item that you mentioned. You said stale dated checks, but I think what you were reading said state. So I'm. I'm not sure. But could you?
It's it's meant to be stale. Yeah, it's stale. Just old checks.
You know, like a refund?
Checks that were issued but never cashed.
Okay. Um. And then you took down the.
Oh, do you want me to put it back up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll help me remember what I wanted to ask. Uh, let's see. What is number six mean? A few checks in AP aging as of June thirtieth that had. Been paid during the year.
So they were categorized. Incorrectly essentially. They were marked as AP, but they were paid during the year. Does that make sense?
No, AP accounts payable, and then they were paid during the year.
In accounting, it's a little different than probably what you're thinking of. And the accounting AP. Is essentially like things that are going to be paid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And there were items that were paid.
Right, right. So they were supposed to be paid like coming up, but they were actually paid in the current year.
Okay, and then.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. The, I don't remember which number it was, but you said you recommended that council. Articulate their monitoring practices and record it in the minutes throughout the year. I never knew that, but I can assure you for myself that I was in communications, asking questions back and forth. Be an email with our finance department throughout the year and. Never knew that I was supposed to be. Noting that in a city council meeting. Were you made aware that that myself and or others may have been communicating? But that the only fault is that we didn't mention it during a council meeting?
Right, so this is a, I was, I was not aware of that actually, but.
Okay.
A lot of clients, this happened. So this is a relatively new finding that Roy wants us to put on these. Essentially, he just wants to make sure that you guys are discussing it with the council. So he just wants to see it in the minutes. So, you know, if you could just have that conversation with them. Doesn't have to be every meeting, but maybe every other month that would satisfy this comment.
Okay. And then my last question is on the. I actually went on to the state website today, the audit. Website. Because I wanted to review the audit, and it actually says right now that they haven't received. Our audit, even though. I know they have because two weeks ago when I checked, it said they had received it. So I don't know what's going on there, but. I'd like to be able to have a copy of the.
Yeah, absolutely. So the actual audit is done. The financial statements are still being reviewed by our compliance team. They've, they've been very slow this year. They had lots of turnover and stuff, but. The financials will be done, probably ends in next week. And we will resubmit them to the state and then mail out the physical copies to you guys as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we were just clearing out a few variances we found.
So you think a couple of weeks and it'll be available?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
My pleasure. Does anyone else have questions?
None.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. And Kevin, I'm sure I'll be talking with you much more in the future. So nice to meet you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we moved up the appointments. So the next item will be nine point two councillor appointment. If you guys could scroll down to the councillor application. Are you guys able to show that on the screen?
We don't have any of that here.
Okay, the agenda, none of that?
No.
Kevin, are you able to put that on the screen? Kevin, you're muted.
So right now, I'm not a co-host right now, so we would need to make sure that I'm a co-host, and then that way I have the ability to post a document. So let me see what I can do here.
You should be a co-host.
Okay. So go ahead, continue with the agenda item. I'll see what I can work up here.
Okay, well, I know that the. Applicant is Mrs. Jan Hooker, and I see her there in the audience. So how about I allow if there's any councillors? Have questions for her, and I see one hand already. Councillor Spleedoff, go ahead.
Yes, Lisa, have your hand up before. We went into this, so I know she put her hand back down, so I didn't know if you, you was able to see it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's not open for public comment. The public comment is at the end of the meeting. We usually. Only when it's a hearing or things like that do public have Q and A time, so. If they do have a question about the audit, they can ask that at the very end of the meeting during public comment.
Okay, thank you. And I do have.
Sorry, thank you for pointing out, Audi.
Okay, I do have.
Okay, go ahead.
Jan, what makes you think you're the best candidate for this position?
Now, that one I never even expected, Audi. I think I care a great deal about our city and our community, and I think I can. Bring a little bit of. Maybe new perspective to the council. I'm willing to look at both sides. And I think I can possibly help bring the community. And council and the city staff all together as a group, not by myself.
Okay, I've noticed you've been on every. All the meetings so far caught a file, so. That's, that's a good point to, you know, for somebody putting in for a councillor to kind of keep up with the. The goings on and everything, and I did read all your paperwork, so. I want to thank you for being there, even though you wasn't a councillor. And I thank you for your information if you're chosen to be a councillor.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Go ahead, councillor Kenyon.
Sorry about that. I had to unmute. I really appreciate your application and the fact that you applied. And since you've been participating for so long, I don't really feel like I have. A good question for you other than what's your favorite hobby?
Oh, well, my favorite hobby would be my nineteen-month-old great-great niece.
Excellent. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Don.
Well, I don't have a question, but I definitely think Jan is an excellent candidate. I know that she has been attending council meetings way before my time. And I think since I started attending regularly, Jan has been a fixture in almost every council meeting. And she's put a lot into the budget committee, being a member there, so I'm just really appreciative that she's going to take on this role. And I know that she can jump right in, and she already knows a lot of the topics that are before the council right now, so. Thank you for applying, Jan. Councillor Coker, go ahead.
Don't really have a question, but I feel the need to ask. Are you sure you're ready for this, Jan, if you're chosen?
I, I can tell you a hundred percent I'm ready for anything, I think.
I knew that would be your answer.
Councillor Bjarnson.
I just want to say thanks, Jan, for putting yourself out there, being willing to do this, but my question is, is Ken ready for you to do this?
I have his support.
I'm sure you do, always.
Councillor Spleedoff.
That's one thing I wanted to ask too, is, you know, we have executive meetings in. Is he? Available to have somewhere else being other than? In the same room with you?
Absolutely. I'll send him outside.
Okay, because that's what I have to do to why she's, they're back the other end of the house in the bedroom.
All right.
Not a problem.
If I, do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jan Hooker for. The city council.
I'd like to second that.
It'll be. The, the remaining of the year.
Thank you for the nomination, councillor Spleedoff, and seconded by councillor Coker. I think we've done all of our. Discussion, so let's go ahead and call for the vote, please, Jackie.
Councillor Coker.
I.
Councillor Bjarnson.
I.
Councillor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
I.
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi. Motion passed. Thank you all. Jackie, are you prepared to swear Jan in this evening?
Um, yeah. I am.
Okay, go ahead when you're ready.
Do you just want to repeat after me, Jan?
Okay.
Okay. I, Jan Hooker.
I, Jan Hooker.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Depose and say that I will defend and support.
Depose and say that I will defend and support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Oak Ridge.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Oak Ridge.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city councillor for the city of Oak Ridge, so help me God.
Of city councillor for the city of Oak Ridge, so help me God.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jan.
Welcome, Jan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jan.
Thank you.
All right, Jan. Jan, you better get ready to vote. Next up, nine point three budget committee appointment. Kevin, would you happen to be able to? Put that one on the screen, and you are muted, Kevin. Kevin, you are muted.
Yeah, my Chrome is cooperating, so I'm trying to. On the right application in order to show it on the screen.
I believe it's Jerry Reed.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got, so I'm on the screen where I can show it now. I just need to know how to share it. So I'm going to try and share desktop.
All right, we'll go ahead and.
Does that work, Mayor?
I don't see it on my end. Does anyone else see it?
So I've got some, some bugs to work out on my end for, for the next meeting unless I can figure it out before the end of the evening.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So I know Jerry Reed, thank you. She is the next person on our list here applying for the budget committee. I'll go ahead and start off with a question. Jerry, have you watched our budget meetings before?
I have watched a bit of them. It's a challenge to get through some of them.
Okay. Yeah, we have a lot of challenges and definitely need some strong voices. Anyone else have any questions for Jerry? Go ahead, Audi.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you got the time to devote to this because there's going to be a lot of. Lot of goings, and are you prepared to what the? Citizens of Oak Ridge are gonna say. of anything that goes on, because you may have you know, troubles because of what is said in the Budget Committee. So I just wanted to make sure that you're prepared for both ways, love or hate.
I, I appreciate that, and I feel that I am capable of handling anything that the City of Oak Ridge has to toss at me, because I've been handling it since nineteen seventy-nine. We moved out to Oak Ridge when I was eight years old, and for the majority of my life, I have lived in Oak Ridge, so I know the ups and downs and ins and outs of all the conflicts that occur and polarized momentum that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Hi, Jerry, thank you for applying. Very excited to see your application come through. I um don't really have a question, as much as I have information for you, in case you're not aware. The uh State of Oregon and the League of Oregon Cities both have um training videos from prior years up on their website, available to view at no charge. So um because of COVID, fortunately, since they had to do a lot of training last year via Zoom, all of that's available. Um, I am gonna be asking later in this meeting for our whole entire Budget Committee to attend training again this year. But if you wanna get a head start and just kind of see um what that's all about, get on there and check it out.
I will definitely do that.
Okay.
Mayor, really quickly, I'll be sure to share trainings with both, any appointments that are approved tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Chief Martin.
Like my computer's slow too, if you want me to, I can try to share my screen, I have the council packet up and see if it works from mine.
Sure. Are there any more questions for Jerry? Awesome, thank you, Chief.
I'd like to uh call for the vote. Oh, yeah, better do that. I wanna make a motion then.
We can have a motion first, I'll call for the vote.
Right. I'll uh make a motion that we uh name Jerry A. Reed for the Budget Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Spleeloff and seconded by Counselor Bjornson, and I think we've, uh, Counselor Kenyon, did you have any more questions or discussion? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, actually, I just wanted to point real quick to the City Administrator. Then normally, at this point of every, um, every agenda item, or actually, this will be for Kevin, uh, Martin. We have the uh proposed motion in front of us, which is one page up from where you're at, or the other direction. Um, a little bit down on that page. There it is. And I wanted to add that um the recommended motion tonight has a term of three years, so I'd like to add a friendly amendment, that we make sure to mention that.
Do you accept that, Counselor Spleeloff?
I accept that.
And Counselor Bjornson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Jackie, can we call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Mayor Hullett.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you for your time, Jerry, be really busy this season.
Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jerry.
Welcome, Jerry.
All right, uh, last appointment for the night, the library appointment, I believe, is Andrew Leach, and I did see his name in there.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Jan Hooker. Can I get my vote in on Jerry as well?
Yeah, yes, please.
Sorry about that.
I forgot to.
Yeah, okay, it's a, it's an I.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Counselor Hooker. All right, now on to library appointment. Andrew, I saw your name in there. Go ahead and uh turn your mute off, and any counselors, do you have questions for him?
Um, oh, there he is.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yeah, I, I read through your paperwork here, and you've got extensive training and everything. And sounds like you'd be a good person for this, I don't know you personally. Uh, do you have a picture that you can show up? I.
Is Andrew still on there?
His name is.
Did we lose him?
His name is still on there, but he, he's muted and there's no picture.
All right, Andrew, if you're on a computer and you're looking how to unmute yourself, it's a little microphone on the bottom, all the way to the left. And um you can also press the space bar to unmute yourself. And if you're on your phone, it's a microphone also at the bottom of the screen for your phone. So we'll just give it maybe another thirty seconds, and if we don't hear, we will put you on the next meeting's agenda. All right, moving on, uh, nine point five budget training, Counselor Kenyon brought this up. Um, just a little bit of discussion point with um Kevin Cronin.
Yes, so there's been uh talk by some of the council side about the LOC, Lee of Oregon City's uh bu- budget training, uh, so there are a couple of webinars scheduled, I think one on the thirty-first and the one the following day. So I'll make sure that we get those out to council, I strongly encourage the council to check those out and uh take those trainings. Um, there's also some more sort of broader training uh for elected officials called elected essentials, so for instance, with the new appointment with Counselor Hooker, we'll need to share that as well, uh, and as, as more trainings uh get released by LOC or uh other entities, I'll be sure to share those with the council.
Thank you, Kevin. There's also the Oregon Department of Revenue puts on some really good budgeting classes that I took a couple of years ago to that. Some of it's kind of a duplication, but some of it is maybe a little bit more in-depth, if, if it interests you. All right, uh, nine point six, public safety, financial error update. Colleen, are you able? I know that you um are still working on it, so uh no pitchforks tonight. Just if you could give us a little bit of an update on uh what you've found so far and what you're working on.
Well, um something is not um balancing in that account, so um I have been trying to figure out that, so I'm gonna take a deep dive into it this week, and I will definitely have it all put back together and um corrected and have real numbers for you by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think um it would be pertinent by a recommendation of our just recent audit, Dawn, maybe you could share a little about your email that you sent, asking about it, um, just for transparency purposes.
Yes, um, I actually noticed in the financials for the month of December. Gosh, I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me, so I don't have the exact amounts. But um it was somewhere around thirty-three thousand dollars that had been received by December thirty-first. And I knew that the bills had just gone out, like uh mine was actually post-dated for the twenty-third of December. So I questioned that, and then when I saw the financials for January, it was up to sixty-six thousand. And yet, um, our City Administrator had given an update to the uh council that we had only been receiving about half of what we had expected from the community, half of the payments, so those two didn't, didn't really make sense to me, so I sent an email to the City Administrator and the Finance Director, questioning that, and then the response that I got was that there was something that uh wasn't happening, happening properly in the software system. And I, I'm wanting to know if, we know if that has been fixed yet, where the software system is actually recording the information properly now.
Right, so I spent about an hour today with the people up with the assist, which is our accounting software system. And uh it is not a software error, um, it is actually an error um on a uh debit credit side, something being posted, um, like I said, I'm gonna have to reconcile the account back to when it started. So it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we will get that figured out, and so, yeah, it's not, so we don't have to worry about the software not working and doing something quirky, so.
Okay, good, because I actually, my next question was gonna be if we know there's an issue with that particular line, are there any issues with any other lines?
Right.
And that sounds like it's a no.
No. Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that update, Colleen. Is there anyone else that has questions, any counselors for her? Questions? All right. Moving on to nine point seven, I put that up there, um, so I wanted to discuss having a WAC committee. Um, I did the, um, I've had a lot of people in the community reach out to me about the WAC, um, different areas. And I also had the opportunity to attend the open house for the uh Spotlight Theater Project and got to see some of the work that they're doing there, and really just putting everything together with that project. And um I just, I kind of think that the council hasn't really um been, you know, made aware of everything going on in the building. That it would be beneficial for us to have a subcommittee of the council to kind of see some of the projects through, and also ensure that it's a community center. Um, and that the theater gets to stay there, but also that we're allowing these other groups that are wanting to use uh parts of the building, and on top of this. I really um think it's important that we start thinking about the future of the WAC. I know in our last budget season, you know, we essentially uh talked about closing the WAC. Um, but there's been some new stuff kind of um brought to me, I don't recall it being brought to council. But there might be some funding opportunities uh bec- coming before us soon. So I don't have enough information to bring forward any of the funding opportunities, I want to hold off until all the right people come to talk about that, but um I think for right now, I really am hoping a couple counselors um would be willing to step up maybe and come together as far as a committee goes. As a subcommittee of the council, but also we start pulling from the community. Um, you know, just somebody that rises to the top would be like Bev McCauley, because she's got the food bank there and um, you know, maybe um warming center, some other ideas, so hopefully this could be a council and citizen committee that we really start looking towards the future of what we're gonna do with that space. Um, you know, I, I, I don't want to pick who's on the community, I really want it on the committee. But I do have to say, Jan, this might be a good opportunity for your, for you, if you're interested, I know everyone else has committees, so um, you know, you, you might think about it, it's kind of stepping in and getting your feet a little bit more wet. But um, yeah, open to conversation to hear what you guys think. Uh, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, well, I was gonna mention that we actually do have the WAC scheduled, as you know, to be closed in June. As we did a new, um, we made a new motion for that in I think it was December of twenty twenty-one. Obviously, that can be changed, but I'm definitely interested in hearing more about what you've just mentioned with potential funding, so um, so I hadn't ever heard of that before. And um if this is a good opportunity, I will throw my na- my name in the ring for participating in a committee. If no one else is interested.
Thank you. Audi, Counselor Spleeloff.
Okay, um, as you know, the roof is bad, so we can't really put anybody else in there because of safety reasons until the roof is fixed. And uh does anybody know above the false ceiling in there, what damage is done, water damage is done in there, and how will the, how is it gonna get fixed? Is it gonna be by people giving money, donating money to fix the roof in there and/or the other structure? I think we need to have uh somebody go in and inspect that to see if there, you know, is if there's any rock, dry rod up in there that could make it hazard before we do anything else with it. Uh, as you know, the porch out front, quite a bit of that's gone because of uh dry rot. And so before, I think, before we start trying to talk about people going in there, I think we need to have somebody go in and do a, a structural assessment uh above those false ceilings and the roof and stuff, to see whether it's feasible to put that up or not. And keep it open.
Okay, well, those are good points, Audi. Um, part of what you addressed would all, um part of what you addressed would be all different projects within that committee. Um, and as you know, the gym is actually a separate building from the rest of the WAC. So um some of that work has already been done, and it might need to be reviewed again, and um you know, the funding opportunities would be something that would be brought forward at a future council meeting, and I'm talking like um, you know, a grant or something like that, that would be big dollars coming, and I'm not, I'm not talking about, you know, um, asking for a GoFundMe account kind of thing, so really, the initial step would be just asking a couple counselors to start helping me with um working on it and then bringing information back to council meetings so that we all can kind of digest all of it and talk about a lot of those things that you just brought up.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, would, um, Jan, you got your hand raised, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, it sounds like something that I would.
I just wanted to say it sounds like something that I would really enjoy doing, so I will throw my hat in.
Okay, well, that would be great if Don, if councillor Kenyon and councillor Hooker would be willing to kind of get the ball rolling on that. That would be awesome. Um yeah, so we'll come back with um, it'll be a really, really long process. It won't be something that's happening overnight. So thank you, guys, and I'll put your names down. Um next thing on the agenda, I am going to, one second, let me change my screen. I'm gonna hand it over to Kevin Cronin. Ten point one.
So which item are we on right now?
Uh ten point one, you kind of already did introduce yourself, but if you would like to a little more, we're welcome.
I hate talking about myself unless it's an interview, since since uh, you know, I would prefer to put the focus on my staff. And I want to give kudos to my staff already, and I know they've only been on the job for a week. Uh but I want to give kudos to the Polite Works crew for doing some spring cleaning around City Hall. And if folks have noticed that there's just just been done some bang up work already out there to make it look. Uh so much more presentable, so and it makes us proud as staff to to have a a really great looking space. Um. I'll give a shout out to our police chief for jumping on a code enforcement case that was brought to my attention. Uh it sounds like it's a chronic nuisance, so we had a good discussion this week about bringing chronic nuisance ordinance to council at some point. Obviously, with the budget, that takes precedence, so we'll see how to try to fit that in. And then um appreciate Jackie and Colleen uh being at the meetings night and stepping up and being at City Hall tonight, so. Uh total team effort, and that's what I love to see as uh the leader of the organization. Um and make my job easy and make me look good, so let's keep up the great work. Uh that concludes my report, Mayor, unless you have any questions about some specific things. Um I guess the only other thing I wanted to share is I did attend the chamber meeting uh that, which was Tuesday night. And I offered the City Hall Plaza to uh a potential seasonal job fair that would be led by the chamber. So more to come on that, uh but I think it would be great to invite folks to Uptown. And check out Uptown and uh be a partner to a a really great chamber activity, so. Um it, time is running out for for that to happen, obviously. Uh but we're looking at somewhere around spring break to try to put that on, again, chamber-led uh city partnership. I think that concludes my report.
All right, uh next thing, thank you so much for that, Kevin. I appreciate that. Next thing up is the city engineer selection. Dawn, were you able to sit on that committee? You're on mute.
Yes, I did.
Okay, if you can lead this one, I would appreciate that, since I was not on the committee.
Sure. Um so on the agenda bill, it says the issue was that the evaluation and selection process. For the city engineer record was completed by the RFP review subcommittee. An excerpt from the RFP describing the evaluation process is included as exhibit one. A summary of the scoring is attached in exhibit two. The re- recommendation is now presented to the city council for approval. And the options are to select the recommended candidate, Karen McLeod. Or to, number two, to cancel the RFP. The staff is recommending option one, and the motion is before us.
I'd like to ask one question.
Hmm.
Was uh Karen McLeod uh. With us previously or not? Or they're a new firm?
Um they have been our engineer record for many years. Yes.
Thank you, I don't, there's not that much difference in there. In the, in the numbers. So it's gonna be a hard decision. I'm done.
Go ahead, councillor Bjornson.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I'm inclined to uh select the recommended candidate, since the committee went through the scoring process. Um I don't think it behooves us as, at this moment, in time to go through a whole nother RFP process. Since that's our um second option, we can't just choose a different candidate that wasn't recommended. Um so that's just my opinion, I'm inclined to select the recommended candidate.
Thank you. I agree. Go ahead, councillor Hooker.
Yeah, I just wanted, on the contract part of it, reading over it, one of the parts on there, it says it's anticipated. That the city of Oak Ridge will enter into a one-year agreement, which thereafter may be extended. Upon written consent of both parties for additional three-year terms. So I guess my question, would the motion be for a period of three years, like it says? I just wanna make it clear.
Kevin, thank you.
It's under D, as in dog. There it is. Second from the bottom there.
Mayor, uh can I comment on this?
Absolutely, please.
May be able to clarify, so what we're approving is a one-year contract. After the year expires and we're not satisfied, we do not have to extend the contract. But if we, we are satisfied with the contract, then that rollover provision occurs without having to go through another process. So um I'm, I did not notice the the uh motion uh until now, so. Uh my suggestion is to amend uh the motion to to one-year period.
Thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it.
So Kevin, are you saying that after the one year, we are not required to to do three years after that point?
We have the ability to question the contract up at that point, yes.
Thank you.
If I, if, if, for instance, if I had issues with the vendor, I bring that attention to council. And you could um redo another contract at that point. Obviously, I will not be here for that, but whoever's sitting in my chair will be able to bring that back to you.
Thank you. Councillor Spleeloff?
Yes, I wanted to know, is it a fiscal year or a absolute one year? From March to March?
It's from data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The date on the contract.
Is, so it'd be March to March.
Correct. Go ahead, councillor Kenyon.
I'd actually like to make a motion. I move that.
Go ahead.
Karen McLeod out as the city engineer record for a period of one year.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Kenyon and seconded by councillor Coker. Is there any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Spleedoff?
I.
Councillor Coker?
I.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
Mayor Hollitt?
I.
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
Councillor Hooker?
I.
Thank you, motion carried. Next order of business is the Banner Bank project. I'm gonna hand things over to Linda Karamer and. Um is it Charles Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, you guys got it, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um hello, Charlie. Um yeah, I'm sorry that uh councillor Whitney wasn't here to introduce the uh request. Because she is the council rep for Parks and Community Services, and she has been for quite a few years. She's familiar with what we're doing, and so what I will do is first, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this request. And then we um. Provided quite a bit of material in your packet, so I will quickly go over some of the main points there. And Charlie can pitch in with some of the steps we will be taking to improve. And beautify Banner Park. Um we've identified um some of the things we'd like to do. And um hopefully, that will reach that goal of creating uh an appealing oasis in Uptown. If you stand on the sidewalk and look up and down the street, it's hard to find a tree to look at. And as we know, with climate change and our change in weather here locally, uh we need more shade. So a couple of the things we'd like to add are some trees to create more shade. In order to have trees, we need soil, and um. We've made some progress with getting other community organizations and members involved. So let me tell you about that. Um first, we have the CTE um class at the Oak Ridge High School. Making a couple of benches that will go in the park. And they will also make some trellises for us to have some climbing vines and other green lovely things. We also have Lane Electric uh giving us a verbal commitment to create an electric vehicle charging station. And that will be on the north side of the park where there's asphalt parking lot already. We also have some volunteers from GOATs who can lend their labor and equipment to help us creating pathways. And we have uh UBR, the Uptown Business Association, that will be directly involved. So far, they've contributed some live edge uh timber boards uh for those benches at the high school. So that was a nice contribution. We, um why don't we go ahead and Charlie, maybe you can break down the steps that we need to take. To make progress on the phase one of the project.
Uh okay, thank you, Linda.
Sure.
Um. Well, many of you probably don't know me, but I'm Charlie Nichols, and I've been on the uh. Parks and Community Services Committee for many years. Um so Banner Park here is, is. Has been here um as a park for a number of years, but it's, it's not used all that much. It's not very inviting, uh as Linda says, it's, it doesn't have much shade, so um. Uh that's something that we would like to change. Um unfortunately, it's former building site. And so the ground there is about a foot of uh gravel. And uh so the first thing that we really need to do is remove the gravel. Fortunately, we have a uh park that needs gravel. Um the uh parking lot over at uh Old Mill Park. Uh you know, where the disc golf uh course is, is pretty muddy. And uh they've been looking for a place to get gravel for that for some time. Um so we have kind of a win-win removing the gravel at Banner Park and moving it to um Old Mill Park. Um. And then, of course, once we remove the gravel, we have a big hole, so we need dirt to to fill that in. Uh so that we can plant uh bushes and trees in that. Uh we're gonna reserve some of the gravel for pathways, so that we don't need to bring more gravel uh back. To the park and uh. And we'll be doing some irrigation uh work there, so that we uh can. Properly water uh the newly planted uh trees and shrubs. And uh as, once we get the irrigation in and working, uh we can, we can start planting things, hopefully. Uh some of that will be done in the spring, maybe by uh tree planting time. I don't, don't know really about timing on a lot of this yet, but uh but that's, that's a hope.
Yeah.
Anything else, Linda?
Uh no, that's, that's great. Um I would just say that uh one step builds on the other, as Charlie pointed out. We dig a hole, we gotta fill it, so we need some money to purchase the soil. And I called around and Oak Ridge Sand and Gravel has some loam at a pretty good price. And their delivery fee, of course, is going to be much less than the uh Lane Forest products farther away. But we did um submit a donation request to Lane Forest Products, so we'll see what they come up with. And hopefully, we can patronize our local businesses. I also spoke with Mrs. Keever uh from Robbins Nursery. And she uh graciously offered to uh give us some native plants at cost. As long as we can find the ones that we want to put in there, so she was very uh good to work with. And we'll continue that conversation once we have some funding. Um I also contacted the hardware store to see if they could supply some uh. Pavers to edge the pathways with, so that they're stable and won't deteriorate rapidly. Unfortunately, they don't carry those, so that is a cost item that would need to be brought in from town. So um yeah, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and start with councillors. Um Spleeloff, go ahead, your. Hand looks like the first one raised.
Okay, I just want to let you know, I've got two little cedar trees out here about. Two to three foot tall, and I would donate those uh for the park there too.
Thank you, we'll see if we have a spot.
And you can come over and, you can come over and look at and see if that's something you want in there.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We've got them from a previous tree planting parade, and they're getting bigger now that. And so we gotta find a place for them.
Go ahead, councillor Kenyon.
Uh thank you, I had a few questions. Um first, though, based off of what you were just saying with. Um talking with Robin at the nursery, did you happen to ask if she could order in the kind of trees that you're looking for?
Yes, that's the idea, so we would, we would work with her from our plant lists um of natives, native species. And then uh she would go to all of her vendors and see where she could get them.
Yeah, I think that would be um. Really a great thing if we could, if we could look at that. I was also pretty stunned by the charge for delivery. Uh and I wondered if you have a quote on, on that stuff.
Well, um yeah, um we were hoping that maybe they could um. If, if they were the ones that were bringing out compost, for example, and Mrs. Keever came up with this idea, she said, well. Um they haul twenty-one yard, cubic yards, and so if they were bringing her some in the truck. And then the trailer had additional amount, they could just deliver it all in one shot. Um it's quite expensive for uh fuel right now, so and then you have to pay the driver, so. Yeah, delivery fees, I don't know how much um negotiation there is there.
Hmm. Okay, um. On a little bit of a side note, uh I have to apologize, because at our last meeting, when you presented. The whole idea of the big project, you probably went over this, but um I was, I was. I had just had a loss in my family, and I have to admit that I was really not in the right frame of mind at that meeting where you presented. And so I may have missed this, but on the. proposal here, it mentions a electric vehicle charging station being donated by Lane Electric.
Yes.
And, and that the city could receive revenue from that. So I was wondering if if, would the city be paying for the electricity? Is there a whole plan worked out for, who would be managing that? Like opening the station to let people charge? Have you, you already reviewed all that?
Um, some of those details are being, being put together by a company called Durst Energy and they specialize in electric vehicle charging stations. So they're working with Lane Electric and a local electrician, GMD Electric. And they're in that process right now. We were just recently informed that Lane Electric had the money to go forward with the project. And we have been talking about it since last summer, but just now it's coming to, coming forward. So how it works is if you, if you own an electric vehicle, you get a little card that works on the electric highway. So wherever you go, you find these charging stations and you just put in your card and it charges your account, sort of like a debit card. And so the payment would be to the city of Oak Ridge for, you know, electronic transfer. And as far as managing it, that's a good question. I will chat with Rick Durst about that. I think there may be some maintenance, but not a lot.
Well, I was specifically interested in the station that's currently on Highway 58 does not belong to the city, right?
Correct.
It's my understanding that if a consumer stops in there to get a charge, they actually have to get a key from someone at a business nearby. And I was wondering if the same would be true, if the city had a station, would someone need to be available to, to, you know, use a key to open it up for the consumer?
No, no, a lot has happened since that charger went in. I think it was in 2018. And so putting your electric vehicle, you know, debit card, I don't know what it's called, into the machine will activate it. There's no key needed and it's available 24 hours a day.
That's good. And so then it does sound like if it would debit to the city, then, then the city would also be being charged for the electricity?
Um, yeah, I think so. Um, that could be discussed with Lane Electric. I can find out for you.
Yeah, I, I would definitely like to point out that before we would move forward with that project, I'd really like a really in-depth, like a feasibility study of some sort to understand what running a business like that would mean for the city.
Okay.
I think that's all I had on this topic. I do, I do feel excited about trees and shrubs going in there and hope and encourage you to use local businesses as much as possible for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, did you have any other comments on the electric vehicle charging station?
Uh, no, I, I, I believe there wouldn't be much impact to the city except for you know, possibly any maintenance. Something gets damaged or something like that. There might be somebody that needs to to have something fixed there, but hopefully that would be minimal. I think they have recognized these stations pretty well. And hopefully it'd be, you know, the, the impact to the city would be a check shows up every month or something like that for, you know, for funds available to the city.
Right, it's along the lines of attracting more people to stop in Oak Ridge. And as you're stopped, you might want a sandwich or you might want to look around and that kind of thing. So that's the whole idea to put Oak Ridge on the map with an electric vehicle charging station.
Um, so then my question would be, since we already have one here, what would, what would help convince the consumer to go into Uptown versus using the one that's right on the highway?
Uh, this one will be faster. The one on the highway is kind of designed around the hotels that are nearby. And so people, you know, would either stay overnight or something like that. With this one, the technology has been advancing and it's a much faster charge. It's miles per hour. And I don't have that right in front of me, but for example, I walked up First Street today and there was a Tesla sitting in front of the, one of the businesses. And it's a Tesla level type of charger that would probably take a couple of hours to give you enough miles to go to the next station, either in Bend or farther down on 97. Or over, if you're going the other way over to Eugene and Springfield.
But this station would not be a Tesla charger, right?
Um, I don't know which brand it would be, but it would be focused on that type of consumer or vehicle. It works for Chevy Bolt. It works for other, other models as well.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely, Kevin. Feel free.
So the request tonight is just for phase one and it does not include the EV charging station, as I understand it?
Right, we don't have a complete proposal from Durst Energy yet and Lane Electric.
Yeah, I would suggest the council just take phase one and then I can work with the applicant on finding additional information about the EV station and then bring that back to council when it's cooked a little bit more.
Sure.
But I think if I may make a comment on, on the charging station is that, that's, that's really kind of a separate issue. It's not part of the, the beautification of the park. As I say, and it, and the dollars there are not really anything that the city has to worry about. It's, it's, I think Linda put that on there just to show that the park is, is getting an improvement to the tune of, you know, whatever that grant is from Lane Electric. And, you know, so, so that's a big, big chunk of money that is getting invested in that park. So what we want to do is, is to, you know, kind of make it a little more presentable and more appealing for people to come and, and stop there. You know, get their car charged there as well as spend some time in the area. And hopefully patronize some of the shops and restaurants and, and stuff in, in Uptown. So I think it's only the 5,000 there that is part of the TRT funding that, that Linda is really talking about here.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for simplifying things. I appreciate that. We're just talking about the landscaping.
Yeah, I was very aware of that, but thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll try to keep it more to fa- phase, is it phase two or phase one?
Let's call it phase one.
Okay, and we're really talking about the soil and the landscaping.
Correct.
Counselor Spleeloff, did you have a question?
No, I got an answer.
Okay. Well, I'm excited for something to be happening there. You know, it wasn't too long ago, there was an actual building there. And, you know, it's kind of been a cleaned up vacant lot, but it's going to be really nice to see that as more of a stopping spot, I think, for people to have lunch, whatnot. So I'm appreciative of the work you guys are doing. I'm excited to see it happen.
Thank you.
And I, oh, I did want to say one more thing that Bobby did call me before the meeting. And she said that you guys were definitely working really hard to use local vendors for all your projects as well. I thought that was really good to hear. All right, do we have a motion from anyone or do we have any more questions for Linda or Charles?
Can we scroll up on the page? I moved that we approved $5,000 in TRT funds to assist in funding the approved permaculture design for Banner Park.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Spleeloff. Do we have any more discussion? Good. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff? Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Hollit?
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, looking back on the agenda, we have reports from boards and commissions. Counselor Kenyon, do you have anything to report for the Administrative Advisory Committee and also Charter Review?
Uh, no, I do not. We had to cancel our administrative meeting. And so we haven't met again since the last time I reported. And also the status of the Charter Subcommittee Review is we're waiting for a survey that went out amongst the committee. To, we did a poll on what the best days and times were for everyone to have the next meeting. And we don't have the results for that yet, so probably the next council meeting, I should have a better update.
All right, thank you. Uh, Parks and Community Services is Counselor Whitney and she is absent this evening. And the next one is RTMP Committee. And I don't believe that we have anything from our last meeting. I would suspect that the next meeting, we might have an application for council to approve or deny. Did you have anything on that one, Counselor Kenyon?
I thought that we approved it at our last meeting.
Um, well, we had an application that we haven't looked at yet.
Oh, an application versus the updated
Yeah.
Process.
Yeah, but other than that, we haven't met since then.
Right.
So moving on, appointments, we took care of those already. However, I'm just going to give an opportunity. I see Andrew Leach's name still there on the, in the Zoom people present. So Andrew, if you're able to unmute your Zoom, we will talk about your application. So I'll just give you a minute there. I would love to do it today because I know this is the second meeting I think you've attended or that we've had your application on the agenda. So again, the microphone is at the very bottom of the screen. And okay, you can also use the space bar to unmute. Okay. All right, well, hopefully we'll catch you next time, Andrew. In the meantime, go ahead and give our city administrator a call at the city hall. And he can maybe help you a little bit on how to use Zoom. That way you're able to join us for the next meeting. Last thing I've got is public comment. Jackie, do you have anyone there at City Hall?
No, it's still just me and Colleen.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Dan Barclay.
There's a couple, Dan Barkin Barclay, 47501, Highway 58. Just a couple of quick comments. Welcome to the pro temp city administrator. Hopefully when you and council, we can repair some of the damage done over the last many, many years with arrogance, contempt, so on and so forth, through the charter that council has formed a hold and put that back into the council manager model that the citizens intended it to be. Second, I wanted to commend mayor and council the level of respect, courtesy, common courtesy and professionalism over the last few months is, is a welcome change from some of the contentious, argumentative childish behavior that we went through for several months. And last but not least, congratulations, Counselor Hooker. I've known Jan pretty much from day one, her and Ken both. And I've, I've been asking her for years, years to go on council. I can't imagine anybody that adds more intelligence, tact and just downright feistiness that sometimes is necessary to council. I think she will do a great job. She has already shown some of that this meeting, catching the one year vice three years for the city engineer. I, I think she's an asset and she will add depth to the degree of professionalism and decorum and, you know, be a positive asset on council. I am so, so glad to see her sitting there. And that was all I had to say. Other than who let the dogs out?
Oh, thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Was there an executive session tonight?
Yes, we do have that after public comment.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, if I don't see any more public comment, then we are going to close the public meeting and we do not have, we will not be reconvening into public. We will be ending the meeting after the executive session. Kevin, would you happen to have that ORS in front of you?
Do you want me to go ahead and read that into the record, Mayor?
Yes, please. Yeah, since it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to be bringing to executive session tonight under ORS 192.6602 subsection A to, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate. No, sorry, it's not real property type, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent.
Thank you all. So Kevin, are you, you able to kick people out that are public?
So I just asked Colleen, who is sitting next to Jackie, to do that, just that.
We're figuring it out.
Well, how would they be able to kick themselves out of the meeting now?
Just leave the meeting. At the bottom of the screen, when you curse, move your cursor down to the bottom, there's a leave button in the
Yeah, but if, if they're hosting the meeting, that's a little different.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the public. I'm sorry.
No.
Do we do the create a breakout room? And then put you guys all in that or put us in that?
Um, oh, you're, you're hosting, so I think.
Kevin has to be hosting.
I think the breakout
He's the co-host.
So let me see if I can, I have that ability to do that. So
I went.
Dean is a journalist, is wanting to listen in.
No, I'm sorry, but we don't have anyone as a journalist of record on earth.
Okay. Appreciate that. Uh, so John Q Public, Andrew Leach. And that's it. So we just have two members of the public that need to, or three, excuse me, three that need to leave at this point, so. I am not seeing how to be able to do that in my
Did you see where the breakout room was? How to do that? That's what I know. That's what Brian used to do. More next to the red button to leave the meeting.
Are you guys able to make me a host?
I think you can, if you need to remove me as a host and and then just transfer it to the mayor, I think that's probably the easiest to do.
And I'd like to ask one question. Who's recording? Is it the down there, the city hall?
The main computer inside City Hall is is recorded.
Okay, I did that, Chrissy.
Yeah, there it is.
Thank you.
It's all your, it's your show now, Mayor.
So if if they cut City Hall out, where Jackie and Colleen are, is it still going to be recorded?
Okay, yeah, so Mayor can control that now as the host.
Okay.
So can we leave now then, since you're not going back in?
I think so.
Thank you so much, Jackie and Colleen.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.